I'm gonna check and see. I think I can. If I thought I could. My wife on this side, yes.
No.
I know, I was gonna say.
Well, they got Prospect, don't worry about it. So Prospect is between Thomas and all that mess. People, yesterday people were cutting onto our street because we'd forever made partners, which is one part of the project. So they cut onto our street so they couldn't circumvent all that traffic. But then just the, the service line guys started working on our, on our block. So now that whole street is torn up. Everything else. All these people aren't cutting, police traffic's not trying to cut through.
All right, you say when? Ready? Ready in the back? Good evening, everybody. You are at a common council meeting of the city of Wausau. It is Tuesday, November 11th. It is, what is 5:36 PM? Wausau City Hall Council Chambers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
We have 11 voting members present.
Okay, we have one proclamation. It's a great and glorious day to be in Wausau. We had the governor visit today for Veterans of Quilt of Honor Ceremony for the, at the school district, and we had the VFW celebration this morning at 11:11, and this proclamation was presented. Whereas, our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when called to duty, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their unwavering patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. And whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the last century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the US Armed Forces during the past century, and whereas our veterans understand the critical responsibilities carried by today's American servicemembers, and whereas today our veterans inspire new generations of Americans as we work to defeat terrorism and advance peace throughout the world. And whereas in respect for and recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom worldwide, we celebrate Veterans' Day. Now therefore be it resolved that I Doug Denny, Mayor of the city of Wausau, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2025 as Veterans' Day in the city of Wausau, and I commend this observance to all citizens so that they can celebrate the bravery and honor, and honor the contributions of our veterans to, to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights throughout history. Signed Doug Denny, Mayor, City of Wausau. Okay, up next is public comment, and we have one commenter tonight. Do you want me to read this? You wanna read this? I'll read it tonight. City of Wausau Public Comment Statement. City of Wausau recognizes the value of public comment on local issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on city matters. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant should be limited to three minutes. Direct all comments to the chair, that's me, not to the members of staff and other participants. People addressing the council shall not disrupt the orderly course of business. The chair values civil discourse and may interrupt, terminate, or prohibit public comment that do not adhere to these rules. First up, Cooper Johnson.
My name is Cooper Johnson, address 1748 Cherry Street. My intention here isn't to criticize anyone, but to represent the perspective of residents who feel unheard in the balance of growth and affordability. Tonight I want to address what I see as an imbalance in our city's priorities. A strong determination toward economic growth that isn't being matched by equal support for long time and lower income residents working hard to get by. Wausau's numbers are climbing faster than the people's, the cost of living keeps rising while many locals are struggling to keep up. Residents in higher income families are being drawn in as the city continues launching major projects even as older debts remain unpaid. According to Resolution 25-1109, the 2026 budget sets the city's operating property tax levy, what home and property owners pay, at 34.2 million with tax circumvent financing included. That total reaches 38 million, up from about 28.2 million in 2020. Over the past decade, Wausau's total property value has also risen sharply from about 2.6 billion in 2015 to 4.57 billion projected in 2026. Yet even with the strong growth, the city is still paying off nearly 4.8 million in existing debt from yesterday's projects. Meanwhile, more than 22 million in new capital projects, most of it financed through borrowing are being added. While funding for community programs remains near 2 million, we're also lucky to have local organizations, neighbors, and restaurants stepping up to help our community, but they can't do it alone, and that's the imbalance I'm pointing to. We're borrowing heavily for development but investing lightly in people, all while simultaneously raising the cost of living. Please don't confuse my remarks with the national inflation of living. My statements are about Wausau and its economic growth. I'm simply pointing out how local growth decisions intensify existing pressure on residents and property owners. Promised future revenue doesn't pay this year's rising bills or property taxes. And I can understand that delaying maintenance and growth only makes costs rise later, and I know a lot of the levy and borrowing is legally restricted to infrastructure and core services. My concern is that while we plan ahead for the future, we must also make sure residents today, especially those struggling with cost of living, aren't left behind in the process. And I want to be clear, I'm not stating that the budget is utterly reckless. It pays debt and keeps our core services running, and I'm not against growth either. But if growth is to mean something, it has to lift everyone. So sure, invest in maintenance and infrastructure, but not at the expense of affordability, community well-being. And I know the city is working diligently to balance long-term infrastructure needs and rising costs. My point is not to oppose those efforts, but to make sure that as we invest in tomorrow's projects, we're not overlooking the people carrying today's costs. Efforts already underway are appreciated, but residents still seem to remain undeniably concerned and unhappy. And again, I'm not here to overthrow the budget or anything in that regard or to criticize anyone. I'm here to open eyes to the fact of the matter that true growth builds communities and not just guidelines. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Anyone else missed an opportunity to sign up? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Would entertain a motion. Motion from Neal, second from Lukens. Any issues with consent? Seeing none?
May begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, first up is item under ordinances and resolutions 25-1102, confirming appointments of the mayor. The city of Wausau to the Affordable Housing Regional Task Force, and we are, Meijer Mua is going to be assigned to the Affordable Housing Regional Task Force, and she's recently been appointed to take Ben Lee's position at the United Way. Would entertain a motion. We have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Lukens. Seeing no comments?
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, without objection, I'd like to make one other announcement. An appointment to Finance Committee would be Alder Aaron Greiner will be taking a seat on the Finance Committee, and for Alder Chad Henke, whose last day was today, on Finance. All right, up next is, I've got one person to speak. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I guess I want to just begin our budget discussion tonight, or deliberation tonight, with a thank you to both the members of the CIP Committee and the Finance Committee for their work throughout this process. It was not easy this year, and sitting through and then viewing online also the budget workshops that the Finance Committee went through, they really took a deliberative and collaborative approach to filling what were some pretty serious gaps and protecting core services, yet still getting the work done that people expect to be done. That, that was no easy task, and so just knowing the work that went into that budget and, you know, some of the trade-offs that they had to make to protect those initiatives and get that work accomplished, I guess I would really like to thank them for their work, and I think the product that they've brought forward is, under the circumstances, the best that it can be. They've really done a good job in terms of, you know, both analyzing the concerns and the gaps, and then leveraging fund sources, you know, to get across the finish line with a budget that can achieve the things that we want to achieve that's consistent with our plans, so thank you for that.
Okay, up next is file number 25-1109. Resolution from Finance Committee adopting the 2026 City of Wausau Budget and General Property Tax to support the same. We have a motion from Lukens, second from Watson. Alder Lukens up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank all, the Finance Committee and CIP for their work. I know there were a lot of very serious discussions, and I really appreciate the, you know, the way that you went through it all with a fine-tooth comb to really try to keep the costs down for taxpayers as much as possible. I have, there's something that I would like a change in the budget, so I don't know if this is the right time to bring that up. Yeah, I guess it would be an amendment.
You can amend it at any time.
Okay. Then I would like to amend it. Thank you. Did it work? Oh, okay. So I would like to remove, page 143 lists $40,000 for professional services related to the creation of a city administrator or city manager coming out of the Economic Development Fund. One, this did not go before CIP, and I, I just, I think it should because other, there are other projects that did and are deferred, you know, I think it should be rated along with the others. I also, I don't know, I guess with serving on economic development, I don't know that that fits economic development. It seems to me it's more like an HR type of cost, and I guess right now with the, you know, departments having had to cut, you know, on some of the deferrals, in the deferrals under CCITC, the third risk, third-party risk management software, data tagging and data loss prevention, to me those seem more urgent than the study right now, professional services, a study to create a city administrator, city manager. So for those reasons, several reasons, I would like to amend it and remove that. I know it doesn't, I guess, I don't know if I should, I guess to remove that right now.
We have a motion to amend, to remove $40,000 on the administrator study that was really a little more to it than that, but it wasn't a study, but I will tell you, we, so we have a motion, we have a second to amend. Second from, from Larson. That was in earmark for contractual services, and we had a, a presentation scheduled for October 14th. Unfortunately, that meeting was canceled, so that did not happen, so that didn't get laid out with enough time for you to consider. I guess I don't have any objection. Alder Watson?
So, looking at the, the, I guess the professional services, I actually, I sort of liked this project. It, it might give us some more information to present to our citizens a little bit more clearly on how a city administrator or a city manager would function. So, like, I think it's more of a long-term planning thing, and perhaps maybe it's not best coming, coming out of the ED fund, and maybe it could, it should have went through the CIP, which might have been more productive. But I guess like the $40,000 contract, I think if it's fully transparent, if the bid for the RFP is open, and we can see who's selected to do this study, and honestly, I think there needs to be a task force attributed to it as well, that's made up of elected as well as citizen members. Because I, I sort of am in agreement with some of the discussion we had about city administrator, city manager. I think it should be a ballot measure, and I know we have something coming up in April referendum-wise, but, I mean, if we do this research and we have that plan and we can really honestly say this is what it would look like, this is how it would impact our city, and then let the citizens weigh on it in 2026 at the ballot, then it wouldn't be so top-down, like, it wouldn't be like, we're choosing city administrator, we would be able to provide the information a little more clearly. And that city administrator would have maybe more expertise in like HR directives, or, you know, different things that like elected like us, you know, who maybe aren't as connected to those individual pieces might be. But I also don't think this should be just a rash decision, like, let's hire a city administrator. We do need to do some background, and we do need to have some voices on it, so I would really say if we do end up keeping it in or taking it out, if we do want to consider this, I do think there should be a task force that we, you know, have, I know, do we need another committee, but I think it would be valuable to have voices from city and elected on this to examine that report, and that it would be full and open and transparent.
Thank you. Alder Watson? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Alder Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that Alder Watson gave that input because it reminded me, I, yes, it's not that I'm just against, you know, a city administrator, I, I think it's something that would be good to explore, it's just I don't think right now, it doesn't seem for economic development, I guess, it doesn't feel to me as though that would be the fund, and I think I would like to see it go, be rated along with the other projects, so that's why. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support this amendment because I think that we're kind of putting the cart before the horse when you're asking for money. I think, you know, the, the proper way to go about doing this is perhaps put forth a referendum to the community and let the people decide if they want a referendum or not, and then if they do want a referendum, then perhaps spend the money on, on the, on the service that they're, that they want to get, so, or on the, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. With the motion to amend and a second, is everyone clear? Do you want to read it? Motion to amend was to remove $40,000 to fund a study, which wasn't exactly a study, but we would, it was coming out of professional contractual services, and that's where we park all of that, that money, but nonetheless, are you okay with that description? Okay. For the city administrator out of the Community Development Department budget. Seeing nothing further?
May begin voting? On the amendment? Motion passes 8 to 3. Motion to amend passes 8 to 3.
Okay, First Amendment out of the way. And we're back to the main motion. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Mr. First of all, the older I get, the younger people look, and I have to say that the young gentleman who spoke for public comment so diligently, grounded, and heartfelt on our budgeting and the way our city is functioning, I mean, you have to really listen to that, and I am so grateful that he took the time and the effort to come and tell us how he felt, so thank you. Tonight, our council is dealing with many diverse issues, many of them related to money and spending. I think one of the most difficult decisions I'm gonna have to make tonight is whether or not to approve the budget that was brought forth. Our Finance Committee has spent long hours attempting to put forth a budget that is positive for the city. I have stated many times at various meetings that there are certain financial items I cannot support and will not support. I believe a city's budget should reflect our city's priorities, which I have been told multiple times are to cut unnecessary spending. Our budget should reflect our priorities. Each year, the budget in front of the council seems to be filled with millions of, millions and millions of dollars for development that is unrelated to the priorities and needs of our people. This year appears to be no different. The budget includes $1.2 million for utility relocations in TID 3, $2,500,000 for developer payments in TID 8, $525,000 for developer payments in TID District 11, about $245,000 for developer payments in TID District 12. It's true, the council already voted on approving certain of these things, and yes, these numbers might no longer be current, but I didn't vote for them, and for me, the current numbers still aren't good enough. In addition, millions and millions of dollars more are included in this budget for capital projects in TIF districts. The problem with many of the projects is not that the government is spending money, but what the government is spending its money on in the budget. I see millions of dollars for trail development and infrastructure connected to upscale development. Am I, as a concept, supportive of trail development? Of course, but not while a good number of our people in Wausau are struggling just to scrape by or aren't making it at all. If a budget is supposed to reflect our priorities, and if our priority is our people, then the budget should reflect the priorities of our people. For me, the answer is to use our limited resources to fund a government that satisfies the needs of our people, our everyday people, and a government that solves the people's longstanding problems. It's not, it's not that government spending is the property, it's that inappropriate government spending is the problem. I haven't, and I won't support any budget that continues to include TIF subsidies for the wealthiest with cuts for regular people. I feel that with any responsible government, it should be the other way around. With that, I would ask the chair to request Director Lindman to come to the podium. I would like to have him explain the $1.2 million utilities relocation. I did speak with Director Lindman this afternoon in that regard, but since this was a project of which I was totally unaware, I would like him to explain the project.
Mr. Lindman?
Yeah, so this is around the Graeble Building. We have utilities that run underneath that site, sanitary sewer, we also have storm sewer around that site, and so it's really to remove those from that site and redirect that sanitary sewer in preparation for any future development along that site, because that property did sell, yes.
And I realize that the property sold, and I appreciate the explanation, but my concern was that I had no awareness of this $1.2 million, and I'm wondering, why weren't we told about that, or why didn't that come before committee? And is this project primarily related to the project that is related to the old Graeble Building? I know that there are some other streets, but is that why the development's being proposed?
That's one of the reasons, yes, yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
Appreciate the explanation.
For sure.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Thank you. Well, I also appreciate all the effort that's gone into the preparation of this budget, and at first blush, it looked like a pretty good one. At last week's Committee of the Whole meeting, I asked if we couldn't, I think I used the term circle the wagons a little bit, as departments, department heads, and find ways to alleviate some of the burden of the shortfall we're seeing for emergency services. Not seeing any amendments that's, you know, new to this budget, unless there's something I haven't seen. It seems like nothing happened in the ensuing week, and I, I still feel like there is time for an effort to be made to look at this budget by all departments and try to find ways to alleviate what might be going on that referendum in what might be going on that referendum in, in the spring. It's like $1.4 million. I'd like to shave that if we could, like to see what we can do. I don't know that anything's been done in the ensuing weeks. So at this point, I'm not planning to support this. Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Director Groth.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So the referendum is related to the '27 budget, not the '26 budget. So the budget that you have in front of you is 2026. The positions are funded within that budget with, as we've pointed out in the budget, one-time revenues. We definitely can look at between now and January, before the question goes to, before council and before the residents, ways to cut back on that. If you recall the timeline, the question needs to be framed and approved by council by the January 26th so that it can get on the ballot in the appropriate time and that the publications can take place as far as what the ballot looks like before that April agenda. But we would have that about two months to work on coming up with alternate funding sources and budget cuts to eliminate some of that $1.4 million. But it's really related to the '27 budget.
Could I follow up?
Mr. Neal.
That being the case, I still, it seems to me that the 2026 budget is a place where we might be able to find funding to earmark for the 2027 budget and that shortfall. People that are going to be going to the polls in April are gonna, they're not going to be thinking in terms of the 2027 budget. They're going to be thinking in terms of, you know, their, their property tax going up, them footing the entire shortfall that we're looking at. Now, I don't know what the wording might look like in January. You know, it might be great. It might be the same as what we're looking at right now. So are, am I hearing that, that this budget before us is not one of the options we can look at to help plan for the 2027 shortfall?
Any spending cuts in '26 certainly will help out in '27. But go ahead.
Well, I think, you know, when you look at some of the adjustments that were made in the budget to reduce or hold vacant positions, that was a one-time. Those position, positions were not eliminated from someone's organizational chart. They were just not filled. Some of them were not filled for a period of time. You know, again, we have a requirement to adopt a budget and prepare tax bills by a certain time period to do a good job of coming up with proposals. I think it's going to take more than one week. You know, some, an example of something that might be available, if you remember, tax increment district number seven will be done in 2026. So, you know, following our past practice, we would bring to the common council, first to the finance and ED committee, and then to the common council, should we extend tax increment district seven one more year for affordable housing? That requires us to extend that increment one more year. If, when we bring that to the council in December, we say no, that increment then is freed up for other purposes, such as funding firefighters. But again, that's not going to be something that's reflected in the 2026 budget. It's going to be reflected in the 2027 budget. And that would be, you know, a sizable dollar amount. But we can't do that work, you know, for example, to calculate what that savings is going to be, I have to have all of the apportionments from all of our taxing jurisdictions. And we just got the Wassa school districts, was that yesterday? And we're still waiting on Marathon Counties, which will be available after tonight. I mean, it takes the clerk a little bit to complete her work on that, but we will have it in a few days. But those are the things that we will work on and communicate with the council between now and January. But certainly, I think we, as an organization, have a message that we should be looking to resolve the problem as much as possible prior to the, the question being formulated and considered by council in mid-January.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you on this parks, and I don't want quite hard. Is there repatriation that you put in the packet?
Repatriation.
Okay. I guess, why is, my first question is, since it wasn't in the budget book, why is this relevant?
Well, any, any cuts, any revenues, any adds, any amendments at any point during the budget discussion become relevant. And you have the opportunity to make any of those, as did Alder Lukens a few minutes ago.
Okay. And my second question was, you know, three times now, this has been voted down by committees and stuff, and yet it, it keeps coming back. And so my, my, my next question is, is who prepared this document? And why has it been withheld from city staff?
It hasn't been withheld from city staff. I prepared the document, and it was not, turned down three times. There was never a vote on it, as far as I can recall. It was dismissed out of hand.
Well, okay then, Mr. Mayor. I, I asked that because when I asked the question at the last meeting, I didn't really get a straight answer. And since the email I got today, city staff wasn't included in it. I just wondered why they weren't. So I guess I'd like to make an amendment on this. I'd like to have this removed from the, from the packet as well, since it's not on the agenda. So that's my amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend, and we're removing, we're removing something. Just a point of order here. The item is not in the budget. It was submitted as a suggestion. It was submitted as an option. It was submitted as some staff work that has yet to be considered by council.
Mr. Mayor, I would like, since the numbers haven't been confirmed or anything that was, which was decided on last meeting, I would still like to make the amendment to have this removed from the packet.
Okay. The, the numbers are the numbers, and the numbers are accurate. But it is not in the budget. So I'm not sure what we're removing. So I would rule that out of order. We're removing something, you're trying to remove something from the packet. It's, it's supporting documentation, potentially could be used to the budget. It's currently not in the budget.
That's right, because it's not in the budget book. So why is it in the budget packet? That's my question. I don't think I'm out of order. I mean, this hasn't been discussed.
Mr. Larson, we're all here trying to come up with solutions and ideas. It's an idea that was put forth. It is not in the budget unless somebody were to make an amendment or a motion to amend and add it to the budget. So therefore, your, your motion is moot and it is out of order.
Well, maybe I should ask.
So next up is Alder Watson.
Maybe I should ask the parliamentarian then?
Mr. Larson, you're out of order. Let's move on. Ms. Watson.
Thank you. I also want to comment about the young man that spoke. Thank you very, very much. And I have a project, this is sort of off topic, but I have a project that I have my students do in my critical thinking class, where they have to analyze an issue and give a good statement of benefits cost, you know, provide a solution. And since it's public, I guess I don't have to ask your permission, but I'm definitely going to feature you in my class, just letting you know, say, hey, check out this. He did a great job. So thank you. But I've been reflecting on the budget process over the last, like, month, few weeks. And I have to say that it didn't feel, like, at first it felt like a lot of thoughtful planning, but now it feels more like politics has taken over a little bit. The, you know, talking about the referendum and the veto proof amendment, that sort of just happened in the last couple of weeks. It's just, I guess, I guess it left a bad taste in my mouth. So just sort of like a recap of the finance process, I think we did a really great job. Like, I'm renewed on the finance committee this month, this year. And so it was really nice to be able to, to be in that process and see how it went by. And like, our city budget policy, you know, sort of outlines how that work goes, right? We have an operational budget that happens in the summer. We do supplemental requests, which this time we didn't do those because we want to try to trim some fat. We had the finance committee that had lots of budget sessions that all people were involved in, council, mayor, you know, committee members. Also, the infrastructure committee looked at what we need to do to repair our roads into the next budget year. So that was all in September. We received this, like, sort of packaged budget in September, early October. And I guess the assumptions when we get that is that the priorities we have identified are sort of looked at in this budget, right? And looking at just some of the, the categories we have in our budget, I mean, 30% of our spending goes to police department, 23% of it goes to the fire department, 24% of it goes to the public works, which that's all, that's over 75% of our budget monies are going to things that I think our population wants and needs, right? They're really important services. But sort of coming to these, like, last-minute changes, I guess, like, I like it because we're all involved, but I also think we've been involved, hopefully, since September, right, in this process. And so when we did receive that budget, we reviewed it line by line, I think, pretty meticulously. And we made some budget neutral adjustments. Even for a second, we had the budget, like, we came down two cents, but that was erased. But it was exciting. And we did vote to support the solar array, which is, I know, borrowing, but it's for a really long-run, long-vision kind of hope. But now we have this, like, emergency. It's sort of like this manufactured emergency that we need to, like, jump to and do something right now. And I think it's a little rash, right? We have to slow down, calm down. Like, we have this, these urgent needs, these public finance, you know, these public positions that we need to fill. In the intro letter in the budget book by the mayor, he talks about these things. But I guess I was wondering where, where did this talk, come in the budget that we got from the staff and the mayor at the end of September, beginning of October? This transition is really important. We, you know, to keep our response rates where we need to be, we need to keep those, those, all those firefighters. But it wasn't really talked about until the tail end of the process. And don't get me wrong, I don't, I know we don't like to pay new ta, like taxes. I don't like to pay them. We're all taxpayers too, right? We're city council, but we also pay our taxes here in this town. And it's not really just about keeping our taxes low, because that, that serves one purpose. It helps with our expenses in the here and now, but it doesn't create that long-run growth, right, and that long-run vision. We, I mean, obviously, by how much we use our funds for public safety, we think it's really important. We want our residents, as well as ourselves, if we call 911, we want people to be there when we want them and when we need them. We don't want, ah, we'll, we'll get by, or it's good enough, right? We want them to be there when we need them. So when we talk about, like, this budget, we worked a lot on this budget. It came from the, the brains of the mayor and his staff. We got this book. We did a few little tweaks to it. But now we have this, this budget issue that we're going to have to look at next year. But that doesn't mean the budget we are operating on in 2026 is, is bad or faulty. We've devoted the money that we want to these, these departments within our organization. And I think we've done it pretty effectively. But I do think we do need to, like, focus on that referendum, because maybe we don't need a contingency plan, because I don't think that's the right word to use. I think we need, this is what a referendum would look like. This is what it would look like without the referendum. But I also think we need to look at some other, and for lack of a better word, because I've heard Mary Ann say it a lot, diversifying revenues, right? I think we should diversify revenues. We should look at those options. We should give our residents the full picture of what this would look like. Because we've talked about storm orders, Haley. We've talked about, like, removing refuse collection from our levy. We've talked about all these things, but the numbers. Like, it's just abstract concepts right now. We need to actually put the numbers to it so that people can look at them and say, okay, this is how it affects me. This is how it's going to affect my property tax. Right now, we're just sort of like throwing stuff up in the air and just, we don't have anything tangible to it. So we need to do the tangible work, and I think we can do that over the next year. Because I don't think it should be a matter of if the referendum passes or not, and that's when we start to work. I think we're going to be working on it and saying, hey, this is what the referendum would do, but this is what we'll do if, if we don't pass that. And this is what we're voting for. We need to have those side by sides. Otherwise, we don't really have a comparison. So I guess I'm a little frustrated about the process right now, because it feels like we're reacting more than being proactive. We're just sort of trying to scramble at the end of this budget process. And we've been doing this for, I mean, the staff has been doing it a lot longer than, than our committees have been working on it, right? But trying to do these little tweaks and changes and having it happen and play out in the media and out in, you know, in the news, I don't think that's productive. Like, we're staging theater when really we just need to get to work on what we want. So I don't think it's really an either/or. I think we have a really good budget in the 2026 budget, but I do think we do, just as Alder Neal mentioned, we need to start working on what we can, like, what are camera one, camera two? What are the options for people? And just see how that would affect the bottom line. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Watson. You hit on a good point, is the process. And it really is, you're correct, it should not just be a September to November process. And I think looking ahead to '27, it's, it's going to be a January to November next year process. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Alder Watson for her remarks. They are spot-on. I agree with everything she said about the process and the goals that need to be set. I did want to clarify a little bit. When people read our budget, that may, may or may not have read them before, what you will see in there from year to year is developer payments. And it's important to recognize that a lot of those developer payments that you see are multi-year commitments that were made in prior years under prior contracts that carry forward. Often, when you incentivize a project, you'll have an annual payment for a quantity of years until a threshold is met. So, you know, don't take old developer payments that you see year on year on year and equate those to new spending. That is us delivering on a promise that we had made before to create that growth. And we need to see those projects through to be a good contract partner. So that, that does exist. The other thing with capital projects that exist in our TID districts, when a TID district is active, capital projects occurring in a TID district and funded by TID, infrastructure, things like that, that does allow for cost sharing among all taxing jurisdictions during the life of that TID versus the city bearing 100% of that burden alone. That does then often tend to mitigate some of the city's individual burden with that. That said, our tax increment districts need to have a balance. You can't have all infrastructure. You have to have some growth to balance that. But there is a case to be made for infrastructure within TIDS and things like that. I do also think that this budget, as is, is acceptable. I think we can support this one. But I do also think that between November and January, we will be having some productive discussions. Mary Ann and I have already talked about the closure of TID VII and what happens if we decide to say no on that extra year of increment, which could be huge for us, really. You know, in the past, we have extended at least two TID districts in recent years to reclaim that extra year for that affordable housing. A lot of those projects are ribbon-cutting right now, like, to get open. So it's important, but we've made a dent and we've moved the needle on meeting that need. Going forward, we may not need to do that again. We may need those funds into our general fund worse now. And what we decide on that, you know, really could help us out a lot. The other thing we don't know yet is we don't know what the 2025 surplus looks like. We don't know what the 2025 project savings for work in progress looks like. All of those things could move forward into 2026 in finance committee and help them offset what amount of referendum ask they end up with, if any. So, you know, the other difficult conversations that may have to happen, depending on where this shakes out next year, is do some of those position vacancies become permanent vacancies? Do any of them become position eliminations? We don't know that yet. You know, and some of those departments may have to take stock, really, of open positions and decide in other areas, is there a way that some of that, that could be pared down as well? We don't know those answers yet. And that really is work to happen in HR and finance, but it's all future work. And I think before we get to that 2027 budget, we will have a lot of productive and even difficult conversations in this chamber, but difficult conversations in this chamber, but they're not really for this budget vote tonight. Like I feel like this budget has been worked really hard, and they have found a way to meet the needs that we have now. And they're going to need to have conversations going forward about the future, but I really feel like today we've got it where we need it. So thank you for that.
You, Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond to Alder Neal with going to the polls and the people not realizing that it's '27 and not '26. I think that's where our marketing firm, Mueller, needs to come in and put that very clearly in their, in their mailing, so that the people that we're trying to educate on this referendum can clearly see that that's what the situation is. And I think that that has to be a big, you know, a big piece of that, so people aren't thinking, you know, oh my God, this is this year, all of a sudden it's going to just spike more than it already does. So, I mean, I, I agree with you, because I think people go, think that this is immediate, and it's going to affect them right now. So I think when that piece of literature is being written or crafted, that needs to be one of the things that is very clear on that piece of literature. The second thing that I wanted to address, and I'm going to ask for Mr. Lindman to come up again, please. You might also just grab a seat in the front. Actually, I've got two things, Eric. With that 1.2 million for the Gravel Building, if that hadn't been purchased for development, would we be doing this?
Eventually, we would be, right? But as we see development or proposed development, right, we want to be proactive for it. And so that might have moved the project up, but, you know, when we have utilities on private property, that's a problem for us, and one of them runs underneath that building, right? So to be proactive and to be, you know, partners, and it's our infrastructure, so, and making infrastructure improvements as well as getting things ready for development. We did the same thing on Fulton Street for the Wongard proposed development down there, you know, with the infrastructure when we did the street reconstruction, you know, being proactive on what proposed for development is down there. So I think this is a smart project, yes.
Are we doing anything extra because of the development than we would normally do to get that, or?
No. I mean, you know, our infrastructure that's there is aged and it's old, the primary reason is to remove it from the private property. Yeah.
So that's basically what we're doing, and we're not putting a little extra in there for the new development?
No.
Okay. The second thing that I'm going to ask, and it's about the lead service line?
Yeah.
I remember when we were first starting all of this, and we were looking at how much this was potentially going to cost the city over a period of time, what we could do to possibly not have this expense. And it was, it was a big concern for multiple people. And we had thought about at some point, maybe we were going to have to slow down this process so that we weren't saddling the taxpayers with millions and millions of dollars. And I don't see that really happening, that we're slowing that down. I see some really big dollar asks of this. And what would be the harm in slowing this process down?
Oh, you know, one of the big things is we're going to miss out on the principal forgiveness, right? The grants that are available. And so right now, we're getting over, over 50% of the costs are, are grants, right, to, to replace these lead lines, which is mandatory, or will be by 2037. So delaying or slowing down the project will put more burden on residents in the future because we won't have the grant or the principal forgiveness dollars to help offset those costs.
Okay, so those loans, they're offsetting the costs of the, of the private side?
That's correct. Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what I needed, thank you.
Got it? Okay, Alder McElhaney.
Thank you. I have a question about, I'm not quite sure, Alder Killian, what TID was you were talking about? Yeah.
TID 3.
Three.
TID 3.
I just have a question, if that's in there, and we haven't talked about it in council, we had an issue last year where I was told if it was in as, in a TID project and passed by budget, it is considered passed, even though council didn't have an individual vote. Is that still true?
Correct. All the projects that we're proposing, you know, went through Finance Committee, right, through the budget process, all of our infrastructure projects, yes.
Okay. I'm not going to be supporting the budget, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Martins.
Okay, thank you. I was going to talk a little bit more about the budget process, but Alder Watson pretty much hit the nail on the head for me, along with a few of the comments from Alder Rasmussen. But yes, it's, the budget, the preliminary budget that the Finance Committee received already had baked into it approximately 4% of cuts over the pre, you know, versus the 2025 budget. I mean, I've, for previous budgets, we've worked on, in the, in the committee and in the council, we've seen cost of continues at 2% or 3%. And in order to hold the line for this year, we had to actually eliminate 4% of our spending so that when the budget was received by Finance at the end of September, it had already met the levy limit and the expenditure restraint. So there was no extra cutting that we had to do as a committee. We could have just rubber stamped the thing and moved it forward. But instead, we did take the time to go through, department by department, and analyze, you know, the cuts and the spending, and make specific targeted changes in order to restore some of the quality of life things that had initially been cut from, from the proposed budgets. We would have lost, if the budget would have passed as we first received it, we would have lost, the, one of the pools would have been, you know, a, on a rotating basis, one of the swimming pools would have been closed each day during the, during the summer months. We would have lost our animal control program. We would have lost the, what was, what was the third, the third thing? So it's, those, those were items that we were able to restore by shifting funding around a little bit. We've, were able to maintain the beautiful, the beautiful occasion of the downtown area with flower baskets by using room tax funds and that. So with, what's, the, yeah, the downtown officers, we were able to, yeah, one of the questions that was, was on, was, was the funding of our downtown police officers, that downtown beat, and we were able, able to maintain that funding at, in, in the new budget. So, and what has happened is that with 4% of cuts, we are only seeing a 3 cent increase on the mil rate over last year. So basically, that's, in essence, that's a, a neutral, a neutral impact to the, to the homeowner, which is, which is a good thing. This, like I said, this is a tough budget, but, but with 4% of cuts, we also have, there's also inside a lot of deferred maintenance, unfilled, you know, vacant positions that will be unfilled for a good portion of, of the year in order to, to reach those goals. So right now, you know, which, which concerns me, because we're focusing on, as, as the mayor puts it, the, the fiscal time bomb of our, of our public safety, the fire department, firefighters, and it's, and that's a very concerning issue. You know, we, that is something that we do need to resolve for 2027. We've been able to fully fund our, our firefighters at, at the proposed increase of 12 over the original, the original number of firefighters we had before this, before this whole safer grant process started. And it's through, you know, through 2026, but the grants are expiring this next year. We've allocated some one-time funding to, to, to smooth things out. So we have, we have that ability, that transition, moving from the grant-funded role of our, of the public safety officers to, to fall on to the levy. Our hopes initially were, as TID 6 was closing, that we were able to use the, use that revenue, you know, from the closed TIF to, to offset the expenses. But unfortunately, with the economy, that has been eaten up by cost of living, inflation, and it just, it just, we just hit that levy limit brick wall at this point. So that's why, that's why we, we're seeing this pinch. But it's good to start talking now. We can't conflate what's going to happen in 2027 with what we need to pass today for 2026. 2026 is, is fully funded, it meets all of the requirements, it meets the levy limits, we are, we're, we're good to go today. And then as this, as the ink dries on this budget, we can, we can work full steam ahead on a solution for 2027. So, thank you.
All right, I'll defer to the clerk here. I'm showing Alder Lukens, this will be your third go, without objection, Alder Lukens.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things. One, I just wanted to share that I had checked with the Finance Director, because when we talk about the referendum, you know, we like have this big number, but like, how does that affect, you know, me? And I, for me, it really helps to have something to give to residents. So anyway, base, what I was told is based on the current assessed value, so, you know, that may change by then, but it would be $33 per $100,000 of value on a home to fund the, all of the firefighters that we need. So $200,000 home, it would be $66 per year. So I just wanted to share that. And then just the other thing is regarding the lead service line process, and I know that Alder Tierney got, her question was answered, but, but I just wanted to share something, because when it comes to costs, and, and I appreciate the work that we are doing and the process, how fast it's moving, and I just wanted to share what the, the physical harm in slowing down the process. I did, I learned recently is that lead is stored in our bones, in our body, and there's really not a way to remove it. If someone has a lot, like they can, they can do some things to try to remove some of it, but because it's stored in our bones, you really can't get rid of it. And for, for, in our brains, there is no way, because it can't cross the blood-brain barrier. And so I was, I was listening to some talks by some medical professionals that work with that, not because of this, but anyway, I learned it. And so really, the, the very best thing we can do is prevent it. So that just, so I just want to share that since I came up, because to me, you know, that is a very, very important cost then, and I'm grateful for all the work that Mr. Lindman and his crew are, are doing on this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alder Lukens came forth with an amendment for, and, and it went through the parliamentary and, you know, stuff, and I come through, forward with an amendment, and I'm out of order. I, I don't get it. Now, you're, you're not shutting me up, you're shutting the citizens of District 10 up by, by saying I'm out of order. I, I came with a, with a, with an amendment, just as Alder Lukens did. And, and I should be granted the parliamentary position, the parliamentary order as Alder Lukens was, or as any other Alder person here gets when they amend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you offer your amendment, Mr. Larson? And the clerk can record it for you.
I would. My, my amendment is, I would like, like to remove the parks reparation from the, from the packet.
Okay. Mr. Larson moves to remove the parks repatriation analysis document from the packet. Do we have a second? We have a second? No. You're going to need to push your amendment, your amend button, Mr. Larson. Okay, so we have an amendment, and we have a second from Alder Lukens. Comments, questions? Oh, parliamentarian, Ms. Jacobson.
Rather than a motion, I've been thinking this through, and maybe the clerk can help me with this. Did we not recently amend the rules under 2.16 that required packet materials be submitted by anyone, I believe, by the close of business the Friday previous to the council meeting for inclusion in the packet?
Yes. So this was included in the packet by?
That deadline.
Yes.
Okay, then I think it would require a motion and a second and a vote by the majority of the body to remove it from the packet. Thank you.
All right, with a motion and a second, on an amendment by Mr. Larson to remove a document from the packet. Do we have any questions or comments on that? Alder Killian.
You know, our mayor said that it was in the packet as a suggestion. It isn't in the budget. He indicated that it was there as a suggestion, because we're looking at so many options as to how we can save money for the city. Rather than saying, remove it from the packet, why don't we say, maybe we should do something to further taking a more significant look at it, have appropriate numbers submitted, talk to Mr. Lindman and find out how he feels about it, since he'd be a big player in that type of suggestion or situation. And instead of removing it, maybe we should just take a look at it and say, is it a good business decision to have more than one option? It's my personal opinion that it is. So instead of removing it from the packet, why don't we, as a group of people, say, let's make a sound business decision for the city? If we get the numbers on it, our staff can gather the information, our Finance Director can give us a wonderful spreadsheet with all of the information, and we will have some information to take a look at, instead of just disregarding. That's my personal opinion, I will not support the amendment.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that that is a valid discussion to have in the Parks Committee that manages parks issues. The last two times this got discussed in the Parks Committee, we specifically did not make a decision on it because there was no analysis of implementation costs or logistics. Those are the missing pieces. And as far as round numbers about savings, the offsetting costs was our concern. And so if we want to take that up sometime in the, in the Park and Rec Committee, again, with accurate and complete information, I think we're all here for it. But this, like tonight is not the time to debut a plan like that.
No.
So, I mean, I, whether we remove it from the packet or not, it really was not a discussion for tonight. It's a discussion that needs to come through committee with proper staff research, not outside research. I want our staff research, and I want the people to be asked that actually hold the. I want our staff research, and I want the people to be asked that actually hold the numbers, that do the work, and that is what we are missing. So, future, absolutely, but tonight, like, no.
Well, once again, all things budget are germane. Did you have something?
I, I just would like to express and advocate for hiring an independent consultant to do a park study because I think the issue is, can we save money on park services? Not who is going to provide the service, right? Like, do we really care if it comes into Public Works or if it remains with Marathon County? I think that the, how big this is to separate from the county, try to move 20 positions into Wassa, I do not believe that we have the skill set to accomplish that internally. We have had two positions, key positions transition at the city in recent years, one being our transit director, and we failed miserably at trying to replace him because we delayed, we did not have good continuity of information or expertise. The other is our facilities individual that manages all of the facilities in the city. Again, these were two people who gave six months' notice, and we could not pull it together enough to get them replaced with people who had information to do the job well and in a competent manner. And it's because they had no support, they had no documentation on how to do the job. We are going to try to bring 20 people here to be supervised by someone who has never supervised parks before. We don't know a lot about the Parks Department and how it operates. To me, it makes sense to hire an outside consultant. We spend one-time money for long-term savings. There is a lot of benefit that consultants can offer. Number one, they're independent. Number two, they have broad expertise. They're doing this type of work all over, and they learn, hopefully, through that process. None of us have done that. How are we going to know what we can save and what we can't save? And they also have diverse experience that all of these studies that they perform offer them, that again, we are not into operational efficiency studies or developing a project management plan on how we would move all of those employees. To me, this is, you know, when Linda Lawrence was mayor, we did several studies, and, you know, we're, we're talking about the future. If we don't change the way we do business, we will get the same budget every year. And we really need the help of consultants to help us see what takes place in other communities and how we can save money. The Finance Committee knows that we have been talking to auditors because we're going and looking at signing a contract for the '25 through '29 audit period. During that time, I've been talking to CPA firms about the services they provide. One of those companies is Baker Tilly, who has a very prominent experience throughout the United States and in Wisconsin about doing operational efficiency studies. And in my recent communication with them, they offered a vision of doing even a two-part study where you could have Phase 1, where they come in and do some preliminary assessments and give you some opportunities where they see savings could take place, and then you could hone a Phase 2 study based on the results of that Phase 1. But it's very concerning. We're talking about services that the residents appreciate. You know, we all, maybe not everyone, but, you know, like I remember when we talked about going to one aquatic center, and it drew the residents out. They loved their neighborhood pools. Having three pools versus one pool is real dollars because you are duplicating services. You have three slides that have to be managed adequately by lifeguards. You have to have people at the front desk, bringing people, checking, taking the money, whatever. It comes with a cost. So I think that having someone who can focus on that task, I can say personally, I have so much on my plate that trying to squeeze in a well-crafted evaluation of what it would number one, look like if it came here, and I don't have the expertise in parks. Talking to Baker Tilly, they have ex-parks directors that they use on these studies. That's how they can offer that expertise. And it's, like I said, independent. So I get very concerned that everybody thinks, in one week, poof, we're going to know how to do this? I can tell you, please don't have expectations like that because it's not going to happen. And it's not because I don't care, because I do care a lot, but we have to do these things correctly. Otherwise, we're going to be in the exact same situation that we're in, we were in and are in with mass transit. No director, or interim director, yet again.
Thank you. Sounds like an argument for city admin or city manager. You're good, you're good. All right, reminder, we are on the motion to remove from the packet, the analysis for the, where, where is it? Repatriate, repatriation, repatriation analysis. So we're removing that from the packet. Alder Watson?
I guess I just had one question. Like, it's not part of the budget. It's just sort of extra information? I mean, we're not accepting it to pass it. I think it can still be discussed at a committee level, but honestly, if we're sort of piggybacking on what Marianne said, I mean, 8% of our budget goes to the Parks Department. I think if we do some kind of like cost benefit or operational efficiency, it should really look at everything. I mean, 77% of it's in PD, FD, and DPW. So, I mean, I think if, to not be in this place next year, I mean, it shouldn't just focus on something that will be hold 8% of our, our annual budget. But I guess I don't see the point of throwing it out if it's just informational, but, so thanks.
Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I think it seems to me that Mr. Larson's concern is primarily focused around the fact that some of those figures might mislead the public, only because they are not pitted against what the startup and maintenance costs of anything of our own might be. You know, a lot of those numbers, round numbers, were taken from an organizational chart that gets published in the budget, but it doesn't take into account the work that those people actually perform, whether it be arborists, whether it be admin, whether it be the people selling the pool pass, whether it's the people that are doing the facility rentals, whether it's the people that are renting picnic shelters, whether it's, you know, whatever it is. And so it's easy to take a flow chart or an organizational chart and just slash and burn, but those people perform some kind of function that we get billed for, and we have to figure out what we have to replace and who we have that could do it if we don't. And so I, I think that that all is a discussion for a future day. I think it should begin in the Parks Committee. If it begins with a legitimate and reputable study that produces accurate information, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Just for the record, this is the authorizing document for every organization within the city. There's an org chart, and your chart's there for a reason, so that you can count heads and know how many people to hire. It's pretty simple. So the numbers, you, you may not like that idea, but the numbers do add up. And, and using the same logic, the numbers, we use the same number for the referendum. We're not counting the $1,500 per, or $15,000 per person, per year in training. That's not in there. Turnout gear, the SCBA gear, all of that, that's not in there. We're just covering salaries and benefits. So, you know, the numbers are the numbers. We have a motion to remove that, however, from Alder Larson, second from Lukens, seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting on the amendment.
No, it's, it's not an amendment to the budget. It's a motion to remove the item from the packet.
I don't have an option of yes or no on my phone, so I'm voting no.
Motion fails four to seven.
Okay, back to the main motion. On the budget. 25-1109. Alder Killian?
Oh, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say Alder Mart, Alder Martins pointed out a lot of significant issues that were resolved in the budget, and I watched those meetings, and I watched, watched the Finance Committee struggle with, how are we going to pay for the flowers? How are we going to keep the pool in? How are we going to allow our residents to pay their animal fees? How are we going to have humane officer services? And they literally had to rack their brains to figure out how to do all of those things, and they did accomplish them. That's why when I see something like a $1.2 million utilities relocation project in our budget, and it's, I don't think I'm misquoting Director Lindman when he says we were just being proactive. It doesn't sound like it's something that is a necessity at this time. I have a difficult time after watching the struggles that were made to get those resident necessities accomplished, seeing something like that in our budget. So I certainly can approve our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Watson?
Um, I guess to, like with our finance, thank you, sorry, by the way, but I, I was wondering for those that may not be wholeheartedly into this budget, if there is some kind of compromise we can strike that would, is it, if it's the 1.2 million, like, is there some way that we can all come to the same place? Maybe this isn't perfect, but what alterations would those, the, the noes want to make that would make this something that's acceptable for your districts? Because I think we can compromise. I mean, that's what we want to do, is we want to, we want to all be happy for this. And I know it's not like we're ecstatic because it's going to increase taxes, right, by three cents. But if it's something we all can come to the table and say, yeah, we could compromise for that, I just would want to see what those, those options are.
Alder McLean?
Thank you. For me, I can only speak for me. I got burned last year on this budget, and I am on finance, and we spent numerous hours going through, but there's no way we can spend numerous hours and know every one item, line item. So I think it's disingenuous to say, anything that's in this, in the one-line item, has been passed by council when we threw the budget. That's why I'm not supporting it. Now, that doesn't mean I may not support the 1.25 million, but I think it, it's transparency as well for residents. Let's have the discussion when it comes in, so residents don't feel everything's behind closed doors and underneath that. We have a perception in this community that it's done at the Graebel Building, we know there's going to be development, and automatically residents are going to believe that it was a handshake deal behind the thing because we didn't speak to it in this, in this council chamber, either in finance or whatever. That's my problem, is I have, if it's a placeholder, it can come back to council and have that placeholder talked about and have a vote and talk about that specific project. So that's my, that's kind of my red line because it happened last year with the perking out there on, with the Y. And, well, it was in the budget, and I asked, I'm not going to go backwards, but I asked the question, it was in the budget, but I had unfortunately assumed, since council did not speak to it, it would come back to council. But apparently, if it's in, a line item in the budget, even under developer payments, and it's a new outlay, it's considered passed with the budget. So that's, that's where I'm having a problem. Like I said, I'm not saying that that's not a good project or something that absolutely needs to be done, but it's the process that I'm having a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alder Rasmussen, I'm showing this is your fourth bite of the apple without objection.
No, it's in response to the utility situation with the 1.2 million.
Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. So our utility, we just heard that our utility stuff exists on private property where it shouldn't be. Our utility stuff, whenever possible, should be in the public right-of-way. If the stuff is old and it needs replaced, and it's eventually going to get to end of life, and we're looking at development in an area where we may or may not be able to get our stuff out of the way and get at it, we need to make our best effort to get that stuff into a spot where it's accessible to our utility employees. If we don't plan for it in the budget, then we end up with a series of budget mods, and that makes people mad, too. So I think planning for that on the front end makes sense. We know it's in the budget, we're anticipating it. Obviously, it's a project that's going to go out for bid, depending on its size and that, and so the timing of the project, they need to plan ahead for that because waiting until the development is ready to take flight and it's got zoning applications pending and whatever it's going to be, then we're in a rush, and then we're in a budget mod situation. That's even worse. So let's plan ahead for it.
Alder Henke?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm hearing all these things people don't like about the budget, and I haven't heard one amendment yet from any of these points. And I guess if we want to just keep arguing about this, we can do it all night, but if you have a problem with it, where's your amendment? Let's, let's vote on it. Thank you.
Is that a call to question? Is that a call to question? No? Okay. Alder Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do agree with Alder Rasmussen, where if it's on private property, we need to get it off, but I also think this is something that needs to go through council first. So I will place an amendment, and that amendment would be removing that 1.2 million dollar Graebel building utility project from the budget, because I think that that is something that needs to go to council before it can be slapped into the budget. Thank you.
Motion to amend from?
Please press your button.
Tierney, could you press your amend button, please?
Trying.
And the motion to amend is to remove the 1.2 million infrastructure improvement from TID 3. Are we calling it Fourth Street? Are we calling it, what are we calling it?
Utilities relocation?
Utilities relocation around Fourth Street, around Graebel property? We didn't?
Building utility. What did you call it, Marianne? Utility? Relocation.
I was not able to push my amendment.
I got it.
So Alder Tierney, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Can you read that to make sure that is what I think we heard? Clerk will read it for us. Go ahead.
Motion to amend to remove the 1.2 million utility relocation project near the Graebel Building from the budget.
Yes, that's fine.
The second from Larson. Further comments? Seeing no, oh, Mr. Martins?
Okay, yeah, um, I'm not going to be supporting this amendment for a couple of reasons. And number one, while it was, it was previously stated that this, that these utilities are in, are in private, under private property and are going to need to be relocated eventually, the funding is coming out. the funding is coming out of TID number three. So that is not going to have an impact on the levy. It is not going to have an impact on the budget itself in freeing up money to do other things within the budget that's all, that's TID funded. So there's, there's, there's going to be no change to what we can do as priorities within, within the budget itself, although it, I think it's, it's been made pretty clear that this is a priority for, for the city because, like I said, this is, the utilities are going to need to be relocated due to their age and their location under, under private property. So I'm not going to be supporting this.
Thank you. Alder Watson?
I guess I have two, two questions. So with TIDS, and this, I guess this is for Mary Ann, like the, the TID plan, does, these things aren't approved in that TID plan, right? The, the utility, like, do they have to be approved by the, in a TID plan?
I'm pretty sure we looked at this and we believed it was covered in the plan.
Okay.
It's been a long time since we did that. I thought Eric and I looked at that. That district's expenditure period ends in September of 2026. So this would be a project that would have to be committed prior to that time. So if the development would not occur where we could actually, you know, the one way you could, well, I don't really know utilities, but if we can't get the project done prior to, or a contract in place prior to September, we would not be able to do this out of that fund.
Okay. And then is there a way, like, for an expenditure of like 1.2 million, when we red light this, it's, it would never see another committee again? It would just happen? Like it's not like?
Green light or red light?
Oh, yeah, green light. I mean, yeah, I follow the roads or the rules, or the rules of the road. I do, I promise. But if we did, if we didn't, if we green, greenlit this 1.2, it would just go? Because, but we have like, so procurement stuff is different than this.
Yeah, and I think that's, I was going to mention that, you know, we definitely could put that on the Finance Committee agenda to look at the procurement policy when it comes to these sizable expenses and maybe have them come back to finance for approval before they go.
Because I think, I think it's sort of silly if, I mean, for all of us, we, we budget for the year ahead, right? And I'm like, oh yeah, I want a new toilet in my bathroom. Well, if I find out that it, like, I don't want it, like, that earmark goes away, but it's not like I have to say, oh crap, like in August, I really want that toilet now. You know, like, we have earmarked, we have this tag, but then we just like to revisit it again. So I don't know if that's something like, if that would be palpable by everyone, like, we still keep that earmark in, but then we have to see these big expenditures again. Right?
Mr. Lindman, you might be able to speak to that, but we do have to bid this. And if it came in over budget, would be a problem. Mr. Lindman, could you talk to that?
Correct, yeah. So typically, you know, we, we have to prep this project, right? We have to plan, we have to design it, we have to, and so then we have to bid it and get everything under contract. But, you know, I think one of the things, if, if there are projects that we bring forward to even finance, like when we go through all the TID plans, right? What we're proposing for the next five years, right? We go through these projects, right? And so if there are specifics with this project, if you want to put it in the budget, and then if you just want to tell us that once you have this project moving forward, we want to know about it and we want to talk about it. So we could bring it back through finance, you know? So we would not engage anything in committing the city until we get formal financing council approval on that. That's perfectly fine with us. But what it does is that, I think in the past, we've put all of our infrastructure projects within the budget, right, for the year. And our typical infrastructure projects don't go to CIP committee, right? And so, but they do go to finance with the budget sessions and they are discussed and then, yeah, and then typically, once they're approved, like our street projects and otherwise, then, then we move forward with them. But if there are particular projects and expenditures that you want to come back, we just need that direction from the council and we're happy to do that as we move forward with the project, right? And also with whatever development comes forward, right? Publicly. And then that could help us better explain to, you know, what's needed there, what's going there, those types of things. But, you know, that hasn't been made public yet, so I don't know the exact items that are being proposed yet, so.
To answer your question? Okay. Alder Tierney, and we're, again, we're on your, your amendment here to remove the 1.2.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as Alder McElhaney said, it's not that I'm against this. What I'm against is first finding out about something on the budget and as Alder McElhaney said, no, we're given this book, this big book, and you're trying to go through it and find the best things and what's questionable in there and what you want to save and what you're not so concerned about. And I think when you have a project to the tune of 1.2 million dollars and it's not going before a committee, it's just getting on the budget and slammed through and not really discussed, that's a lot of money not to go in front of somebody before it goes to the budget. So, you know, for future, I would like to have a dollar amount of some sort that maybe can be discussed that before it would be on the budget. Any project over X number of dollars needs to come before whatever committee is most involved with that. But I'm not changing my amendment. I'm just saying for future consideration, that could be something that we discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I guess just to clarify, if we defund this now and we remove this money from the budget, that money is then gone. There is no money reserved in TID three or within the budget. And so then any need to reinstate that funding becomes a budget mod after the fact. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so that, most infrastructure projects, whether they're annual infrastructure projects or CIP, infrastructure projects go to infrastructure and finance both, and then they are incorporated into those workshops. So the stuff has already been hashed out through those processes, right? So utility projects and utility relocations, I would imagine, begin maybe even in the utility. Does the Utility Commission have a review on any of that?
That, no, not on this one because it was being paid out of the TID.
Oh, I see.
So, yeah.
Okay. All right. So that, that is the question, is removing that funding now, I mean, you can give Director Lindman the direction right now that you'd like to review the project design and financing plan when he's complete with it, but if you remove that funding now, not only are you not using that TID increment for it, you could sail right past the deadline to do so, then you're in budget mod territory. And that even has different voting thresholds. So I think that's not such a hot, hot idea if we think we're going to need to do this project soon.
Thank you. With a motion and a second to amend to the 2026 budget to remove the 1.2 million utility relocation project near the Graeble building from the budget. Seeing nothing further, is everyone clear on that? Yes is remove, no is keep.
You may begin voting. Motion fails four to seven.
All right. Back to the main motion. Any other amendments? Alder Watson? You're, is that a hang left over?
I think, yeah. I spoke.
Seeing nothing further on the main motion. This is twenty-five dash one-one-zero-nine, 2026 budget.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to one.
Okay. Next item, it's got the same file number, is that good?
Yep.
Twenty-five dash one-one-zero-nine's Resolution of the Finance Committee Authorizing the Modification of Fees to the City of Wausau Fees and License Schedule and Adopted Pursuant to Wausau Municipal Code 3.40.0108. It's the 2026 Comprehensive Fee Schedule. We have a motion from Lucan, second from Watson. Seeing no comments?
You may begin voting. Motion passes eleven to zero.
Next up is File two-five dash one-one-one-zero, Preliminary Resolution from the Infrastructure Facilities Committee Approving Levying Special Assessments for 2026 Street Construction Projects. Motion is from Lucan, second from Rasmussen. Alder Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is in the minutes, but I really would like to have this go on public record. For the last year and a half, being on the Infrastructure and Facilities Committee, the city has told the residents of 28th Avenue that after we closed the hill because, the 28th Avenue Hill because it was unsafe, they were told for a year and a half that that road was going to get fixed in 2026 and that would be budgeted in 2026. They were also told that, you know, we, we cannot put an overlay on there because of the way it is and the drainage isn't proper and we get one good rain and boom, there's $60,000, $100,000, poof, down the drain, just like that. So that's why they told they weren't going to do an overlay on that. Well, now, I guess I even feel hoodwinked because, you know, the year and a half, we, we talked about this at the committee and all of a sudden they come up that, well, no, we can't afford the debt. You know, I just want to voice my disapproval on this. I think that, that the neighborhood expected more out of us. I think the, the committee expected more out of this. I didn't, I didn't expect to have the rug pulled out on this project as abruptly as it was. And, and the real losers of this were, are the people in the neighborhood that were told for a year and a half that this road will be fixed and fixed properly in 2026 and it is not in the budget. Thank you.
Okay, I apologize, I'm not sure what this has to do with 28th Avenue, but, okay, you're on. Alder Henke?
Thank you. I just respond to that since it's my district. It was a, it was a shock that it didn't make the budget. I made the amendment to add it to the budget and it didn't make it, but I, I know there are other funding sources we're looking at going out for and companies that we're reaching out to to hopefully help with some of this. So I'm, I'm hopeful in seven years we can get this street redone, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to one.
Up next is File two-five dash one-one-one-three, Resolution of Finance Committee Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of Up to $311,838 Taxable General Obligation Promissory Notes Series 2025 Second Issue and Providing for Other Details and Covenants With Respect There To An Approval of Related Financial Assistance Agreement. Motion is from Lucan, second from, sorry, I got.
Greiner.
Alder Greiner.
Oh.
Seeing no discussion?
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to one.
Up next, File two-five, one-one-one-four, Resolution of Finance Committee Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of Up to $4,596,236 Water System Revenue Bonds Series 2025 and Providing for Other Details and Covenants With Respect There To An Approval of Related $5,407,337 Financial Assistance Agreement. Motion is from Lucan, second from Watson. And I have to speak is Alder Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've seen a lot of these bonds, revenue bond series going out for water. And I guess my question is, if I'm not mistaken, we did win about 2.3 million on our suit for the PFAS, is what was reported. Why is that money not being put towards some of these water expenses?
Well, it was about roughly 2.8 and that, that is currently being looked at as what we do with it for capital expenditures. This is somewhat different. If, Mary Ann, you want to help with that?
I would say the way this state has their grants set up is if we don't apply for the loan, we don't get the grant. So it's, we have to apply for the loan. It's a 0.25% interest rate. So if we, if council, the water commission, whoever makes the final decision on how to use, those are PFAS money, you could in theory invest it. Obviously, you would make more than 0.25 in interest income and then retire the debt with those proceeds. That would be one option you would be able to do, but it really, if you don't take the loan, you don't get the grant.
Well, I guess, I guess part of my confusion is when the press release went out about this 2.8 million dollars, Mayor did say it would be up to council to decide what to do with it. So.
Correct.
I haven't seen that. So that's why I was wondering what was the situation with the water bonds here and where's that 2.8 million dollars coming into play because we haven't seen it go in front of council?
That is correct. That hasn't been decided yet and there is, there is, it will come through committees as appropriate, sure. But this, this being the 2.25% loan, it is, it is advantageous for us, this is the DNR-funded loans associated with the lead service lines. So in order to get those grants, we have to take this loan at 2, at 0.25%. So paying off and buying other capital, we have GAC filters, filters to replace at $1 million a crack. We have other expenses that would be a much higher interest rate to borrow for capital than this would be. Anything else? Seeing none?
You may begin voting. There you go. Motion passes nine to two.
Up next is File two-five dash one-one-zero-five's Resolution from Finance Committee Approving Budget Modification for an Amendment with GEI Consultants for Environmental Consulting Services for the former Wausau Business Incubator Site. It's the W DNR Brits, number zero-two dash three-seven dash five-eight-seven zero-eight-one at 1300 Cleveland Avenue. And Alder Killian, if your, if your speak button isn't, give me a hand raise. Okay. All right. I have a motion from Lucan, second from Neil and Alder Killian.
I.
We are now.
All right. Time for discussion? Okay, okay. The GEI resolution was formulated before the November 4th ED meeting and there were a couple of issues that were resolved there. And one of them And one of them was that public participation plan would guide the property's ultimate non-industrial use and future non-industrial redevelopment. And the other one was that the RAOR would move forward, parallel with the redevelopment plan that was decided. So I wanted to amend the resolution just to add a couple of whereses so to clarify what was decided at the ED meeting. And I did speak with Director Lindman this morning. Since he's going to be such a big part of it, I would like you to hear how he feels about the amendment.
Mr. Lindman.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I did talk with Terry. She had proposed to make those couple of amendments that she discussed, and they're very right in line with what we're proposing to do, to have the public information meetings, community developments, already set the first meeting for the end of January, and then also have the RAOR prepared in parallel with the public comments and the end use of the property, working with our GEI consultants as well as the DNR, the Green Team, once that gets established. So, yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would like to amend that with those two whereses, and I do have those printed out here if that would be helpful.
That would be very helpful. So you want to add these two additional whereas clauses?
Okay, so a motion to amend is pending. Is your amend?
Can you press your amend button by chance?
The amend button working?
Otherwise, oh.
Not working.
You can press it, but it doesn't do anything, Caitlin.
Mayor, can you read the whereses before someone seconds it? Just so we know.
We will, we will. We'll get them teed up. Here, here, I'll, oh, let me read them. Okay, to get you thinking here, it's a whereas, your Economic Development Committee at their November 4th, 2025 meeting, voted to approve public participation plan for 1300 Cleveland Avenue to evaluate and guide the property's ultimate non-industrial land use and future non-industrial redevelopment. And whereas the City of Wausau's Department of Public Works and Utilities stated at the November 4th, 2025 Economic Development Committee meeting that the RAOR for 1300 Cleveland Avenue will coincide with the end use of the property, which is the focus of the approved public participation plan, and that the redevelopment and RAOR processes must therefore work in parallel with one another.
I'll second that amendment if we need a second.
Amendment, motion to amend by Killian is seconded by Rasmussen.
It's just not doing any good anyways.
It just hasn't done anything.
It's correct. Three. Yeah. You got off track there.
Nothing.
No, I'm sorry.
Everything else is working, but hey. It's telling me to be quiet.
So I have the two whereas. I have the two whereas clauses as a part of Alder Killian's motion to amend. I was informed by the city attorney that by adding these two whereas clauses, we would also have to adjust the action and the therefore be resolved clauses in the resolution as well. I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that.
City Attorney, did you want to clarify?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just looking at the resolution, my packet, making sure it was updated because the title on the resolution didn't match the agenda item. And while the whereas clauses are fine and they should be added as part of your amendment, but they're not going to be voted on. It's just background information. It's not included as part of the action of the council unless it's included in the now therefore be it resolved paragraph. So as this resolution stands now, even with the addition, if the amendment is approved of your two whereas clauses, it still just says all we're doing is modifying the budget. Period. That's all, that's all the be it resolved paragraph says. So didn't you want to incorporate your two whereas clauses into the be it resolved portion of the amendment? I mean, of the resolution?
I want to do whatever will clarify the understanding of the ED committee, just so that in the future, there's never a question about, about how it's supposed to function. So.
I'm not telling you how to draft it. I'm just saying that it's, I want you to understand the impact of just adding whereas clauses just provides background information in the resolution. Ultimately, the only action the council is taking is to modify the budget.
So in the future, if this comes up, will it be clear as to how the RAOR and the GEI consultants are supposed to function? That's the whole purpose of my amendment. I just wanted it clarified so that we know that those agreements were in there and there's never a question about that.
Okay. I mean, but if you wanted to amend it included in the be it resolved, that the council have public information meetings and that they're adopting a budget amendment, holding public information meetings, and what was, what other, the other whereas clause was said?
The RAOR.
And that that's directed to be prepared in tandem or in parallel with whatever else is going on, then you would have that also included in the action of the council, not just adding history to the resolution? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and we can just do that this evening? Okay.
That's what I'm asking, if that's what you intended.
That would be fine, yes.
Then it.
So it seems, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we took that last sentence, that public participation, redevelopment, and RAOR process must therefore work in parallel with each other should be part of the resolution? Now therefore be it resolved. If we add that from her whereas, does that get us to where we need to be?
If that's what she wants, I'm not trying to draft it. I'm just saying, I'm just clarifying the difference between just adding whereas clauses and actually amending a resolution by amending the now therefore be it resolved portion of the resolution.
Okay, so we have that motion to amend to, in addition, add to the now therefore be it resolved clause. Are you amenable to that, Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I think I came up with the wordage that we're trying to do with the action statement. We would add to the end, council hereby directs appropriate city officials to undertake efforts to engage the community and develop the RAOR in parallel with that process. Because that spells it right out for what we were, right? Is that?
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yes. Common Council hereby directs appropriate city officials to undertake efforts to engage the community and develop the RAOR in parallel with that process.
Could you make sure that it says that the public engagement process will actually be what is formulating the end product, the end use as to non-industrial? That's, that's what's critical, is that that public input process is going to help formulate a non-industrial redevelopment.
So at the, at the end, where did you, scroll down to where we had the end? After in parallel with that process, we would add to ensure that the end use of the property is in compliance with that directive.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I also added in the now therefore be it resolved to the beginning of Alder Rasmussen's addition and then, pull down.
Okay, I think I'd like to invite Director Pfeiffer and maybe Eric to come up. Can you take a look at this and see if you're comfortable with it? I want to make sure that, you know, we're not missing something or we're getting ourselves too tight here.
Thank you for the opportunity. We've had conversations on this and this has been a focus of the Economic Development Committee is incorporating these and talking about them running two parallel paths. From what I'm seeing, this is our intent in following through on it, so I don't see a problem with it.
My clarification would be on ensuring the end use is in compliance with that directive. Oh, are we talking about the directive here to staff? Are we talking about? Is that, is that your intention?
I'm sorry, what?
The end use of the property is in compliance with the directive. So the directive being running in parallel, is that what we're talking about?
The directive is that it end up, that it's non-industrial use and it's, the RAOR is in parallel with that.
Okay. Clear to you?
Yep.
Okay.
It's clear. I'm good.
All right. It's clear to staff. We have a motion to amend and it is seconded. Seeing no further questions.
You may begin voting. Motion to amend passes 11 to 0.
Thank you. Mavis Bacon on the keyboard tonight. So we're back to the main motion, 25-1105, approving the budget mod as modified or amended. And then we had a motion from Lukin, second from Neil, as amended. Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay, we are approximately two hours into this meeting, one hour past our normal start time, but two hours into the meeting. Could we use a break or we keep going? All right, we're going to keep rolling. We're at suspension of the rules. I have a motion from Watson. This is a suspension, to suspend Rule 12A under referral of resolutions, second by Larson. Seeing no comment.
You may begin voting.
Two-thirds vote required.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
First up is File 16-1110, Resolution from the Finance Committee accepting the 2026 Beet Patrol Grant for Wausau Police Department. Motion is from Lukin, second from Greiner. No questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right, we have four parts here to a Highway 52 East Wausau Avenue project. First one is 25-0910A, as in Alpha, it's a resolution from the common council approving roadway typical sections for State Highway 52 East Wausau Avenue from North Sixth Street to North Eighteenth Street. Motion is from Lukin, second from Watson, Mr. Neal.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank members of staff and for a meeting that they had with me a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, with people from Wisconsin DOT, where we went over in detail some of the concerns I had, some of the ideas I had and shared ideas that other people had. A lot of them revolved around the use of roundabouts at a variety of intersections, which would have maybe enabled us to have like a raised median. And this could have been really great in terms of taking care of the rear end collisions and making it easy to negotiate all the various, or the intersections involved. Having seen things like this elsewhere, felt like, wow, this would be a good thing to look at. Well, it was, oh, I just want to bring up that the staff memo on this item here is a file error in our packet, so it wasn't just me, I guess. But at any rate, because this is a designated state highway, not just a neighborhood street, if you will, then we are beholden to follow some very strict guidelines. And the, the use of roundabouts, while it's physically feasible, it would also entail the takings of about a dozen houses along the route. There's just a very large footprint that is required for state highways. So after going through all of that and, you know, somewhat frustrated at reality, I think what we have is what we have to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. We'd had, I think, some detailed discussion about this, you know, in trying to amend it on the floor and massage it last time when we talked about it and it really got, that we were pretty far down in the weeds with trying to get to a design that meets those requirements. So I am glad that we took. So I am glad that we took some time to get it the way we need it. My understanding is that the design that's brought forward today not only minimizes those takings, but then gets us to the design caveats that we were looking for, where we began with the original amendment at the last meeting. Is that correct?
I think there was a lot of ideas around, and I think we kind of got into the weeds on different... So what we tried to do in these is to put it into four separate amendments, so we can get one for the cross-section, you know, one for the sidewalk, one for the path, and one for the lighting.
But the cross-section diagram really takes us back to where the Infrastructure Committee was headed before we dove into a number of amendments, right?
Correct. This is the cross-section that was approved at the CISM committee, or the Infrastructure Facilities, excuse me.
Okay, thank you for that. That's the only clarification I needed.
All right, motion is second on 0910A on the cross-section approval.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Next up, filed 250910B, and this is a resolution from common council approving a multi-use path along the south side of the Highway 52 from North Thirteenth Street to North Eighteenth Street. So this is just the path, the multi-use path that was discussed. Motion is from Larson, second from Henke. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting this multi-use trail. However, will be supporting the sidewalk when it comes up. I just feel that the multi-use trail is inappropriate in the city here. I feel that there's, the land acquisition is going to, is an unnecessary cost for the city, and I just, and who's going to maintain it? Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alder Larson. I'm not supporting this either. There's way too many land takings. It doesn't have connection to anything larger, and there's no plan at the MPO to create any connection anytime soon. So I'm also supporting the sidewalk, but not this. Thank you.
Mr. Neal?
Yes, I agree with the two mentions from the two Alders right now. I will add that snow removal becomes an issue too, like a 10-foot-wide multi-use trail. If we're in front of my house, I wouldn't be too happy about having to maintain it during the winter, so I would not support this.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion fails 3 to 8.
Okay, up next, item C to this series of 250910, "Resolution From Common Council Approving A New Sidewalk On The North Side Of State Highway 52." This is East Wausau Avenue again, and this would be from North Thirteenth Street to North Eighteenth Street. Motion is from Henke, second from Tierney. Mr. Neal?
Thank you. I will not be supporting this. I don't really see the need for it. Reports from people who live there say that pedestrian volume is very, very low, so we would have to take some, take some, some land from people that live there, pay for our share of the new sidewalk. And all over town, I can see plenty of streets where there's a sidewalk on one side and none on the other. And, you know, I get to the corner and I cross over to the sidewalk. It's pretty, pretty basic, so I don't, I don't think that the cost meets the need, because the need is almost nonexistent, so I will not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henke?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because we voted down that trail, there'll still be a sidewalk on the south side, correct? Okay. Yep. I just, if it wasn't, I would probably amend this so that we made sure we had it in there, but I just wanted everyone to be on the same page, that that south sidewalk is still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to agree with Alder Neal. I too have received a large amount of feedback that there are not many pedestrians using the north side, so I just wish to echo his sentiments, and I will not be supporting this either.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I guess in my experience in the Infrastructure Committee in the past, one thing that we find a lot is that oftentimes folks that don't want to maintain a sidewalk will tell you no one walks there. And you find out later that in terms of walkability and pedestrian safety, especially on a connecting highway where the traffic volume is elevated, you find there are actually people out there. Alder McElhenney's nodding because it happens all the time in her neighborhood too, and so we've had this experience. My understanding was that the engineering recommendation was to install the sidewalk. Was that correct? City engineers nodding. So, I mean, we want to take steps when we can to keep our community safe and walkable, and so I will support this sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that, you know, as Alder Henke pointed out, there is a full sidewalk on the south side of the street. Anybody that needs to do any walking can walk across at the intersection and take that sidewalk east or west. There's really no need. Again, the need should dictate what we're doing here, so I would not support it.
Thank you. Alder Lukens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to verify with engineering, so you're suggesting there should be on both sides? Is that correct?
Right. And I mean, the DOT is going to pay for half the sidewalk. I think if we can get sidewalk added in there for walkability and get the state to pay for half of it, I think it'd make, an engineering recommendation would be to put it in.
Thank you. Then I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further on the sidewalk with a motion second for Resolution 0910C. All right, item four, and this is the lighting. This is 25-0910Delta. Question? Question on the vote? Okay. Gotcha. On the C, on 10C or 10D?
The lighting issue.
Okay. "Resolution From Common Council Approving Street Lighting For State Highway 52 East Wausau Avenue From North Thirteenth, Again Through Eighteenth, North Eighteenth Street." We have a motion from Henke, second from Larson, and Alder Killian, you were ringing the bell before we got here, so go ahead first.
Thank you. I know I had spoken with Alder Henke about having Cobra lighting and decorative lighting at Thirteenth, and he indicated to me that it was similar to the Thomas Street lighting, but then I started thinking about it, and on Thomas Street on First Avenue, 3M is on one side and Bud, the Budget Repair Shop is on the other, so that amount of, huge amount of lighting is not going to impact residences like it would on this street. And I'm wondering if this is going to be too much lighting at this point, where the decorative stops and the Cobra begins? I don't know what engineering would think about that. Is that how it's going to be? Is that going to be a huge amount of lighting there?
Where one starts and the other one stops?
Are you having decorative lighting end at Thirteenth? And Cobra lighting begin at Thirteenth? So you're going to have both lights?
No, we wouldn't double up. I mean, we would space them appropriately so the decorative would have...
So it's not going to be an influx of light for those properties? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Alder Rasmussen?
I have to point out that the heading on that resolution should say from Sixth to Eighteenth. The resolution speaks to it in the whereas, but I noticed that the heading of the resolution says from Thirteenth to Eighteenth? The agenda item?
Yes, it does. So that, that makes sense. It should be the entire length of the street?
Correct, and that's...
So is it, is that the same for the sidewalk, or?
No, no, this is the only one that has...
Just the lighting?
Yes.
All right.
So I don't know if that makes a difference with the agenda item, but I know the resolution speaks to Third, excuse me, Sixth to Eighteenth, but the agenda item was not agendized properly.
So I would ask Attorney Jacobson, is that a scrivener's error we can fix here? Or can we amend this?
I think we can call it that, yes. If we've corrected it and everybody's under the same understanding that it's Sixth to Eighteenth and not Thirteenth to Eighteenth.
Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. In considering this, I mean, we have two different lighting choices, one substantially more expensive than the other. Decorative lighting adds a substantial cost at our expense, 100% our expense, in a neighborhood that is outside our central business district where the rest of that lighting basically lives. The issue with those decorative lights also is when they're damaged, when cars hit them, they're very expensive to replace. They have to be positioned closer together because they throw less light than a Cobra head. When we installed all those at what we thought was the appropriate distance on Third Street, they looked like a landing strip. People complained about those. A lot of times, people think that decorative lighting is wasteful and wasteful looking. So I think that what we have working on Grand Avenue and on Thomas and on many other operative corridors where we have the overhead Cobra lighting, that throw, it's consistent, it throws better light, and the DOT largely covers a good portion of that cost. We would have to bear the difference if we want decorative lighting in there, and I just don't see the need in this area for it. I think that we should amend this item to remove all decorative lighting and replace it with standard Cobra head fixtures throughout the entire corridor. So I'm going to offer that amendment. Except my amend button isn't pressing.
So you have pushed the amend button, and you're making a motion to amend?
Mm-hmm.
I will second that amendment.
To remove the decorative lighting entirely and replace all of the corridor lighting with standard Cobra head fixtures.
Sorry, is Cobra an acronym, or is it?
No, it's Cobra like the snake.
Like it.
It's a style.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend. There is a second to remove all decorative lighting and replace with standard Cobra lighting. Alan, does that comport with, does that work with what we're trying to do?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, standard overhead Cobra lighting is pretty typical on a corridor like this. The idea to put decorative lighting came from infrastructure facilities, so...
Okay.
I mean, the state is willing to pay for half the cost of the overhead Cobra lighting for the entire project, which is $375,000, and the city would have to pitch in the $375,000. Alder Rasmussen was correct that anything over that $375,000 is 100% the city cost. I just, I did a preliminary cost estimate, that additional cost is about $375,000 from Sixth to Thirteenth, because you have to space them closer together.
Decorative.
And there's a lot more of them, so...
Okay. All right, so we're speaking to the amendment to go strictly to Cobra head. Mr. Martins?
All right, thank you. Yes, I'm going to, I'll be speaking to the amendment here because, yeah, we have the decorative lighting already, like Alder Rasmussen's out on Third Street also, in my district on Prospect Street and nearby on Seventh Street. And it is, those fixtures, they have to be, they're spaced quite close together, and they put a lot of light. And the reason why we put those decorative fixtures on, in those corridors is to help alleviate some of the crime in those neighborhoods. And they, they have done a very good job of lighting up the neighborhoods, and I will give you that. The decorative light on Prospect Street during the winter months makes a great nightlight in my upstairs bathroom. So I will, I will give you that. But which speaks to the point is that I don't believe that the decorative lighting is particularly appropriate in this area along East Wausau Avenue, and I think the Cobra lighting is going to be more insufficient. One of the concerns I have is maintaining dark skies, and I'd like to see, you know, us as a municipality have a very sensible lighting directives in order to, you know, max, you know, minimize stray lighting, maximizing its, its, its throw in, the light's throw in places where it needs to be, but not scattered in places that it doesn't. You know, we've, just in, right now, you know, if you, if you look up towards the stars, we were in a very unique point in time where Aurora Northern Lights are very visible, but you got to get 20-some miles out of town if you want to see them. And not that I'm saying that we should do this in order so that we can, we can view, you know, view, view these, these great solar and astronomical effects, but it helps, it's, maintaining dark skies helps a lot of things. It helps, it helps us to enjoy nature. It helps with migratory birds. It helps with animals. And, and it saves, you know, ultimately, it's going to, it's going to save us money by using appropriate lighting fixtures. So I'm going to support using Cobra lighting for the entirety of East, East Wausau Avenue. That's what I was going to speak to before the amendment was made, so I'm glad Alder Rasmussen brought this up.
Thank you. Mr. Neal?
Thank you. In an infrastructure meeting, it was I who brought up initially the discussion of maybe using some decorative lighting for a stretch there. In a subsequent meeting, which I was at, it got passed. Subsequently, though, I do not support decorative lighting, like an island, as it were, of decorative lighting in the middle of where there is no other. I mean, if you, if you travel west on Wausau, there's Cobra-type lighting all the way down like to Athletic Park and whatnot, so there's no continuity. On the spacing issue, I'm happy to see the lights added to Seventh Street and Prospect correctly. The reason behind, and I was a big proponent of the Seventh Street lighting plan, was twofold: eliminate darkness and to give it an aesthetic uplift in a neighborhood that could benefit from that, and really, really fought for that and am happy that it's there. Years ago, when Third Street was done, I, I was like, what the heck is going on? Because they were so, and I've looked into it and found that there was a faux pas, and spacing was not done correctly. So I wouldn't use Third Street as any kind of model for what we're talking about here. Seventh Street, Prospect, was it Washington Street? You know, what I, what I like about the decorative thing is, and I like to keep, you know, pursuing it where appropriate, is sort of like the hubs of a wheel, or spokes of a wheel coming off a central historic district into historic neighborhoods, you know, where it adds a sense of atmosphere, aesthetic appeal, that, you know, a big, you know, mercury vapor LED monster from, you know, War of the Worlds, you know, in the neighborhood is not really that, that pleasant to see. So, yeah, there's a time and place for everything, and this place is not the time for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say we just had a speaker at the Sustainability Committee meeting last week from Bird City USA, and she was going over all these things that we do that really help meet their requirements, but I just want to echo what Alder Martins was talking about with lighting. Yes, we need it, you know, safety and things like that, but I too would prefer no more lighting than, than we need because it, it does disrupt, you know, wildlife and migratory patterns and things like that. So anyway, I'm okay with, with this whole plan, but thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further. You good? All right.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. All right, I just see the video technician is back from the county, so the county has completed their meeting tonight before we got done. Might have a budget. All right, item, last item on the suspension of the rules.
That was the amendment for the, the removing the decorative.
Oh, sorry about that. One foot in the door already.
Sorry.
So we are back to the main amendment, so we've, we amended to make Cobra lighting the standard from six to eighteenth, and now we're on the
I reached.
Main motion, and that's corrected from six to eighteenth.
This was the cue prior to the amendment, so.
Oh, we still have some, okay. We've got three lit up. Alder Rasmussen, are you still looking to speak? Alder Henke?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone for tackling this at full council. We debated taking it back to infrastructure or not, and I'm glad we were able to figure this out with the full body, so I want to thank everyone for that, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're at no further questions.
May I begin voting? This is the item as amended, the lighting item as amended.
Item as amended?
Correct. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Up next is file number 25-1112. It's a joint resolution from the Committee of the Whole and Finance Committee approving the retention of Miller Communications for referendum services and a related budget modification. Do we need to know what the, did we vote on that tonight at Finance?
Three to two?
Three to at Finance.
Three to in Finance, and
Five.
Committee of the Whole was five four. Okay, motion from Tierney, second from Watson. Okay, so are we?
The, the final, be it resolved, on this resolution merely modifies the budget, but are we also authorizing the appropriate officials to sign an engagement with Miller Communications? Was that the intent? Okay, then we should probably add that language to the end of the be it resolved. It's just budgeting for it, doesn't approve entering into the contract. Is there any objection to that, or would you, okay, we're, no objection to that if we amend and change, yes, there's no objection here, I think we can add that.
Okay, so without objection, then we're going to allow appropriate staff to sign the contract if this is approved? Okay, Alder Lukens, oh.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to confirm that this still stands, right, that it's kind of a pay-as-you-go, like we can, if we wanted to adjust anything, correct? That's what they had said last time, right? Okay.
Director Groth, who is the question for?
Oh, Jer, oh, you were? Okay.
Chief Cobb.
So if we decide to change anything else?
Yeah, so this is a number not to exceed. Mary Ann and I had a discussion with them, anything that we would cut out of it moving forward, in case we were able to handle some things on our own, would be taken out of that price, so we could, you know, be under that price, but we won't go over.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
Alder Neal.
Oh, Tom. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay. Well, at our Committee of the Whole, we had a quite robust discussion on this, with a result in, what, five to four vote? Pretty darn close. There was talk about the optics, that, you know, for this in the public eye, there was talk about, oh, we need somebody who, you know, is good at wordsmithing and, you know, putting together convincing arguments or whatever. There was talk about that this would be a, a neutral sort of document or effort, not to sway one way or another, but again, the optics, I think, out there in, in public land will, will be, that they're being sold to. I did not support it at the Committee of the Whole, and I will not support engaging this agency tonight.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think that there is value in neutral and informative communications. I think that there is value in getting accurate facts in front of people when you ask them to make a decision, you want them to make an educated decision. I think that, you know, I took to heart some comments that were made in the Committee of the Whole, in fact, that there is also a perception that when that information is created by staff and was released from City Hall, that, you know, it, it has an optic as well that could perhaps be negative. And so I think to have that neutral party that creates that marketing piece, that, you know, whether you call it a marketing piece or an informational piece, whatever it is, I think that there's value in, in someone who does not have a stake in the outcome preparing those materials using the facts. And so, you know, for that reason, I, I think that I will support this because the price has been reduced so far. The price that it started at originally, when it had the survey piece, was a non-starter. But I think we've pared this down and we've refined the number of mailings, recognize that anything that can be taken in-house by the staff, you know, whether it be social media engagement or whatever, that that would be done, I think that pairs down the price, so with that, I can accept it. Thank you.
Alder Lukens.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I did specifically write something up, posted it on our neighborhood Facebook page, sent out, asked our leadership team to send it out to hundreds of people by email, and I got a few yeses. I think you should move forward with that, and one no. So anyway, I, because I shared those same, you know, concerns, I was really torn. It's hard because I agree. I think, you know, there's some, some negative press out there, no matter what the city does for, you know, against city staff, and I'm not saying that's, I'm deserving, but, so I think that could be, you know, that's the other side of it. So anyway, I will be voting in favor of it because I did get the chance to, and I, I feel, I mean, it got sent to a lot, a lot of people, so I believe that if there, there was a big concern, I really would have heard from more people, so thank you.
Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with Alder Neal. I think the optics and the public are not good. I believe that the cost of this is probably very poor as far as timing in the city, and I had requested to wait to talk to my constituents before voting on this, and I did, I was given that opportunity from the Committee of the Whole, and the overwhelming feeling was that it was unnecessary, and I, some of the older constituents actually said that, I'm insulted that people have to think I have to be educated on how to vote, so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Neal.
Just to add, the question neutrality, on the face of it, is something that people are not going to swallow as, as being true. Their client would be the city, their client would be the staff that they're working with. Their client is not any of the public. This agency would not be working with our public, going to, you know, neighborhood meetings or anything of the sort. One item was a survey, which was taken out because it was unwieldy and, and expensive, and I just don't see the need for this agency. They, they are not neutral. By definition, you know, they're engaged by the city to fulfill a purpose, and that is to verbalize why we need this referendum passed. That's, that's what their job really is, regardless of how we label it. So no, I just think that we are able to put together a summarization, or a summary even, of what this referendum is about, what are the implications, and, and make that public through our various channels of communication, like, like many of the other things that we communicate to our constituents at voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Watson.
Thank you. I guess as an educator and as someone who has a degree in educational technology and instructional design, I do feel that it's valuable to have a skilled person designing the materials, and honestly, I'm, I'm always out for getting educated about anything. I think, as we've noticed before today, like, this is a huge book, and so getting this down to something that's manageable and edible by public takes skill. And I'm not saying that our, our, our staff doesn't have design skill, but I'm not sure if we do have a graphic designer that's employed by us, or a communication specialist. So they, we have great accountants, we have great attorneys, we have great customer service reps, but we need somebody to help with the design part. I mean, there are a lot of really great programs out there like Canva, et cetera, but that puts a lot on the staff, where you have this person, this group, that can do it probably very effectively and efficiently. And so I guess I'm always out for getting educated regardless, like, just being able to be, to have, you know, the outcomes side by side, because again, a lot of the stuff we've talked about in council has been very abstract. Getting the actual numbers in front of them, I don't think it's supposed to be demoralizing or demeaning in any way to the residents we're sending it to, but I think it's just added information. It's like an extra piece of, of literature or a website that you can peruse. So it's something that's vetted, and vetted by our staff, so I guess it's, I mean, yes, we're going to be hiring this, this company, but they're getting information from our staff to just put it into something that somebody can, can, can view and visually be able to, to wrap their mind around. So I'm definitely going to approve, or vote to approve this. Thanks.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I, I appreciate those points that Alder Watson just brought up because we just heard the finance director earlier speaking to the need for, you know, a study because she is so, has such a full plate. And so I, I do think, I really, you know, I really think partly the way we approach it. I mean, we can have any kind of information, right? And if I go to people in my district and say, oh my God, this is such a big waste of money, here you go, of course, like, it's all really going to depend too on how we approach it. This is to be neutral, and, you know, I'm thinking about at the Committee of the Whole when there were all the staff members there, and we were all thanking them, right? So I guess, you know, from that standpoint, to read, read, read social media articles and you'll see the negatives toward city staff. I think that could be a danger, so, you know, I guess, either way, but I think, does the staff, do they have the time to? That's putting that on them, so anyway, I, again, I'll vote for it, and I, I think that would be a good idea. I've given it a lot of thought in the time between. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Just to close out, I mean, we are not talking about the need for a marketing campaign, logo design, intensive creative work. The, the foundation for what we're talking about has already been put together for our review. The argument has already been made for the need. We've seen that made and communicated. Now, I think all we're talking about is to boil it down to a summary for the public so they can read it before they go to vote. Not, not some beauty piece, not some, you know, overdeveloped, you know, marketing piece. We don't need, you know, little cartoons of fires and fire people. I mean, let's just get the information that needs to be gotten to the voter, and, and it's already there, it just needs to be summarized for their consumption. Thanks.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. When I attended my neighborhood group, we had a room full, and I talked with my neighborhood group about the upcoming decisions, the situation that we find ourselves in, you know, from a public safety standpoint, and about the potential for a referendum ask and for the potential of communications. How you position that question and how you position your answers when you're asked about this, like matters. I think that if we have a tone, people will absorb that tone. I think we do have to be neutral. We are asking people to help us make these decisions, and so I think that's helpful. Everyone left the room, in my neighborhood group, wanting to know more about it. There was no hard no, there was no cheerleading yes. Everyone wanted to know more. I think there's a lot of folks in this community that want to know more, and I think that it is unrealistic of us to assume that every one of them is an avid and voracious consumer of local news, of the, the relevant social media sites, that they all are as tuned in to what we do as we are. You know, I mean, on the average, we each represent over 3,000 people. There's no way that one of us can communicate with 3,000 people. Like, we need a uniform, consistent, accurate message, and I feel like that's what we get here. It's less about marketing than it is about communication. If we had an in-house communication person, that person would be doing this work. It would be like their assigned task, but we don't have that person, and we've never employed that person. School district has one, county has one now, we don't have one. And so in the absence of one of those folks that has those skills, we need to hire those skills. I mean, we've pared down the, the method by which we'll hire them in terms of the money, but I still think we need that help. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
I'd like to call a question.
Question has been called. Do we have a second? Second from McLehaney. Okay, and under our rules, anyone wishing to speak can still speak if they're in the queue, so we'll have, we, well, we had one, but go ahead. We're going to vote on the question.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
Okay, so before we take the main vote, I'd just, I'd just like to reiterate some of the things that we've heard from Mr. Neal, for example. This is going to be a high-profile decision we're going to be asking residents to make, and naturally, it's going to drive advocates for and against. You'll have the advocates, you'll have the yes signs out there, you'll have the no signs out in the air. The city has no part in that type of discussion. So it's, this is not going to be an unknown entity out there once we formulate the question. So it's So it, it ultimately, it's going to be a political item, and it'll, it'll be widely known throughout the community. So having said that, we are at the question. Motion was by Tierney, second from Watson.
May I begin voting? Motion fails 6 to 5. Because it needed two-thirds since it was a budget modification.
Why do we have one not vote on here?
You, you only vote in the
Okay, okay. All right, item eight, announcements from the mayor and Alder persons. I don't think I have any announcements tonight. Coming around the room, anyone over on the one through five, six? Anyone? Seeing none, I would entertain a, oh, comments. We have one commenter in the back. Do you have anything left? No? All right. We'd entertain a motion to adjourn. From Tierney, second from Lukens, all in favor. See you later.